Recording in progress.
The time is 6:46 PM. This is a special closed session for the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here.
Thank you.
Next is Ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report for the items on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, now is the time for public comment on the closed session items. Are there members of the public who would like to comment on the closed session agenda? Seeing none, we will now move to the closed session. We will be taking items 5.1 and 5.2 in closed session.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
The time is 7:17. We are reporting out of closed session. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor Mora. There was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
The time is 7:17. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:15. This is a regular meeting of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryvorz?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora.
Here.
Thank you.
Now's the time for approval of the final agenda. Members, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
I will second.
Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryvorz?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Members, do we have any ex parte communications? Seeing and hearing none. Now is the time for public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to comment on the consent agenda can come to the podium. You'll have two minutes. Seeing and hearing none. Members, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryvorz?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no action items. This meeting is adjourned at 7:19. The time is 7:19. This is the regular city council meeting for the City of Emeryville. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are present and still seated. Before we move approval of the final agenda, I would like to make a modification that we move item 4.3 first. This is the proclamation. Members, are there any concerns?
No.
Okay, let's, well now, do we have a motion for approval of the final agenda?
Motion to approve the final agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryvorz?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Section four, special orders of the day. Our first item is a proclamation of the city council of the City of Emeryville recognizing the month of March 2025 as Women's History Month and honoring former council member Nellie Hannan's contributions to the City of Emeryville. And I've asked my vice mayor to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. So proclamation of the city council of the City of Emeryville recognizing March 2025 as Women's History Month and honoring former council member Nellie Hannan's contributions to Emeryville. Whereas Women's History Month honors the extraordinary contributions of women from all races, classes, and ethnic backgrounds, recognizing their pivotal role in the growth and strength of our nation, both in recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have played an integral part in shaping every aspect of American life, consistently demonstrating remarkable skill, dedication, and sacrifice in defending the principles upon which our nation was built. And whereas women have broken barriers with courage and determination, overcoming discrimination, harassment, and adversity, thereby creating new opportunities for other women and girls, which in turn strengthens and enriches our communities as a whole. And whereas the 2025 theme, Moving Forward Together, celebrates the powerful role of women educating and inspiring generations, highlighting the strength, equality, and impact of women who have devoted their lives to education, mentorship, and leadership, shaping the future of all generations. And whereas the City of Emeryville is proud to recognize its own history of dynamic women leaders, elected officials, community advocates, volunteers, entrepreneurs, educators, and many others whose efforts have helped shape the city we live in today. And whereas the City of Emeryville joins in celebrating the enduring contributions of women throughout history and honors the strength and commitment of those who continue to work toward equality, justice, and opportunity. Whereas to commemorate the 2025 Women's History Month, the City of Emeryville is especially proud to honor the enduring contributions of former Emeryville council member, Nellie Hannan, who has been a steadfast advocate for affordable housing, playing a key role in ensuring that all residents have access to safe and affordable housing opportunities. And whereas Nellie Hannan founded the Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program, ECAP, a nonprofit that provides essential support to low-income residents through services like food assistance, job training, and emergency resources. And whereas the Nellie Hannan Gateway has established, was established as a lasting tribute to her tireless work and dedication to the community, symbolizing her ongoing legacy in promoting equity and support for Emeryville's most vulnerable populations. Resolved by the city council of City of Emeryville that the month of March 2025 is proclaimed Women's History Month, and the City of Emeryville commemorates this year's Women's History Month by recognizing the pivotal role of former council member Nellie Hannan's enduring contributions to the City of Emeryville, proclaimed by the mayor of the city council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, March 18, 2025.
Nellie, would you like to take a picture with us?
Sure.
A photograph?
Absolutely.
Good evening to all of you.
One minute, one picture. A picture? Yes. Speak up, you guys. Would you like to join us?
Thank you, Natalie.
Wait a minute.
Another photo.
They're still taking these pictures. Good evening to all of you. I'm very shy when it comes getting up speaking, but my thanks, first of all, my thanks to all of you, especially to Emery, the City of Emeryville, and to all the business people here. Just all of Emeryville have put their arms around me from the beginning, and I'm just grateful because you supported the ideas that I had. God gave it to me to help his people, and that's what, that's what we do. And I'm just, I've really been thankful because the people, when I needed to go to someone for help or just resources, they were always glad to help. And it's just been going and going. When I first started, I had no idea where it was gonna go, how long it would last. But it's been down through the years, and I've seen so many things happen, and so many people come through, especially when you see the hungry people and the little youngsters come and need food. It just touches your heart, and you're just ready to just really help them. And I'm just so grateful because when I would go to the city or to the business people and looking for help, you know, for the kids in school, they always came across. And it's just been a joyous time working, working with you, and I just certainly appreciate it. And it's just more than I can say right now. And to see all of this happen, my children grew up in it, and my grandchildren, and they came, and the little kids. You know, one thing that really is precious is seeing little children come and stand at that end line and serve the people. The little, you know, think about, the Bible says, "A train of a child in the way it should go when he's young." And these little youngsters come and they help them, you know, give people some food to eat. And it's really just been something that's really, I just can't put into words how much I appreciate it. And you see, all my family is here, and I just appreciate all of you. You know, we're all one big family, and that's the way it is. And I just can't put it into words how much it means to me. And again, thank you.
I'd actually like to recognize, my understanding is Senator Aragüín's office is in attendance and has a proclamation for Nellie. Is that correct? Yes, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erica, and I'm here today representing State Senator Jesse Ardegeen, Senate District Seven. We're here to present a certificate of recognition to Nellie Hannan. The certificate reads, "On behalf of Senate District Seven, I am honored to recognize your unravering dedication to Emeryville. Your steadfast commitment to affordable housing and advocacy for the underserved has made a lasting impact. And as the founder of the Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program, and through your service on city council, you have provided vital resources to those in need. Thank you for your leadership and perseverance." And it's signed by- And it's signed by our now state senator Jesse Aragüín.
Before city council remarks, I would like to invite any other members of the public who would like to speak on the proclamation to please come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Mary Maltzby Jeffrey. And there's a song, the lyrics of which so much reminds me of Ms. Hannan. It goes like this, "If you give a little more than you take, if you fix more than you break, if you take the time to help a stranger in the rain, there's a place for people like you. I'm told up there, the streets are made of gold, and when you get there, there's a hand to hold. I believe when your days down here are through, there's a place up there for people like you." There's so much meaning in that word that reminds me of Ms. Hannan. If there's a place up there for anyone, there's a huge place up there for her. After spending over forty years writing grants and sitting on boards, nonprofit boards, I was totally burnt out when I moved here to Oakland. I didn't want to hear another word. I didn't want to hear nonprofit, and I didn't want to hear grant writing. A friend of mine introduced me, I was teaching at Castle Mount, and kids were hungry, tons of kids, kids would come to my classroom. This person would go to ECAP. I didn't know ECAP at that time. They'd get food, and they'd bring it to me and bring it to my classroom, and I had food in my classroom. Kids would come and get that food in the morning and in the evening. After I retired from teaching, I've, I noticed that there was a big need for people just in the neighborhood, in the area. So a friend of mine introduced me to Ms. Hannan, and I was feeding people in the park on my own with the help of my church. And they introduced me to Ms. Hannan. Ms. Hannan said to me, "Whatever you need, just come get it. If we have it, you can, you can get it." And that started a relationship that I will forever treasure. Ms. Hannan is the type of person that early in the morning, six o'clock in the morning, when most of us are still in bed, she's out picking up food from one of those sponsors, one of the donors, the stores. And you never know she's the age she is, because when you watch her move around those stores and lift those boxes and get that food, it's just amazing. You know that she has been given a gift that most people have not. And I really treasure the time I spend with her when she, she does not hesitate to go out and serve the people. Many people that I've worked with in the past in nonprofits, they are administrators. They stay behind the desk and, and do that. Ms. Hannan is not afraid to get out and go and meet and greet people. And when we go roll up into an encampment, people see her, you would think that they just saw God. That's just how, how they endeared she is to them. And she never, I've never seen her reject a person. I've never seen her turn anyone away. The program that she started, feeding, giving clothing, furniture even, and household appliances, she just doesn't turn anyone away. Wherever she sees the needs, she addresses that need. So if there's ever a fixer for people in this community, and there is a big need within this community, she is that fixer. She's the mother of this community, and she's been that for over forty years. And as much as I've worked with nonprofits, I have never, ever seen anyone like, like Ms. Hannan. I refer to her as my sister because I want her to be my sister. She is everyone's mother. And you could not have chosen a better nonprofit to support than ECAP. And I say that from the bottom of my heart and from the multitude of experiences that I've had with nonprofits. Thank you for supporting ECAP, and thank you for supporting her and Mr. Bobby in this, in this fight to end hunger.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vicki Sewell. About thirty-eight years ago, someone called me up and asked me if I could come over and weld up some security windows. And it was at an old defunct fire station on San Pablo, and it was ECAP. So my brother and I went over with the welder, and we welded up the security windows, and they were giving out free turkeys. It was Thanksgiving time, and they had tons of free turkeys, and they were giving out all kinds of food, and of course, they wanted to give it to me. And I was saying, "I'm good," and you know, "I'm good." But ever since then, I've always watched ECAP, and I was so proud that the city of Emeryville would finance them and help them. I watched them move from the fire station, that's now where the wing shop is, you guys, to where their old site was on Thirty-Six San Pablo, and now where their new building will be. And I can't tell you what a difference it makes to my community that people are fed, and they feel a lot safer, happier, and it makes a big difference in West Oakland that ECAP is there. So thanks again, you guys.
Thank you, Vicki.
Hello, everyone. I'm Christopher Hannan, one of Ms. Hannan's oldest grandchildren. One of my earliest memories was from that same firehouse she was just talking about. But my grandmother has the heart of a saint, and all I can thank her for is teaching me how to help people like she has, and I would like to thank her for that.
Thank you. I'd now like to ask, oh, yes, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Latalia Parish, and I am one of the event organizers for ECAP. And I want to say that Ms. Hannah is a stalwart in this community. She's very well-loved, very well-respected, and we will continue to support her, and we appreciate that you're acknowledging her today. And when I met Ms. Hannah, it was just before, was at, during COVID. And I saw all of this movement in this one area, and I was like, "What is, what's going on over there?" And so I introduced myself, and I said, "I would love to volunteer here," because I had introduced my son, he was very young at the time, into volunteering and doing hard work, where you're rolling up your sleeves and really being committed. So everything from going out into encampments, mopping the floors, I was very honored to do that. But what I realize about Ms. Hannah is she has grit, stick-to-it-ness. When things look bleak, she still shows up. And this is something that my husband and I teach our son, no matter what it looks like, that you continue to give. And as the Bible says, "It is better to give than to receive." And working with ECAP has really driven that home for me, and it was such a great, ECAP is such a great example for my son, so that he really understands what that means. So I would just like to say, "We love you, Ms. Hannah. We will always be in your corner, and we're looking and hoping that you will continue on for the next one hundred years." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. As you look out here, you can probably see an old man standing up here. But I had to come out and take about sixty seconds to talk about Nellie Hannan, because she's my older sister. And if anybody knows her, like I do, raise your hand, because I've lived with her. And when I got old and retired, here she come, come and help me. I said, "I'll give you two days a week." Little did I know, she was gonna make it seven days a week, and I'm there every day, seven days a week, trying to keep up with her, because she's got energy abound. Just, just a couple of things about the stuff that, that we're doing. We've reached so many people in the community. I was looking at some of the statistics that we, we compile every month, and just last month, we provided food for over thirty-four thousand people. And the month before there, it was thirty-six thousand, but as we get to the summer, the numbers go down a little bit, but you can see, we're feeding a lot of folks, and a lot of folks have dinner tonight because of ECAP. And for that, thank you all for all of your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to make this very quick, because I think it's important to add a little balance. I haven't known Nellie for thirty years, or, I've known her for about three years. And she has had as much impact on me as anybody else. We all, you, you and the senator's office gave her a proclamation, a gift tonight, but you all, we all have received a gift by just being in the presence of her greatness. You know, as a tech refugee, I ran into her, and coming from tech where there is a dearth of the kind of stuff Ms. Nellie has, I've been blown away, and she can call me at any hour, anytime, any day, and ask me to do something, and I'm packing the bag, and I'm there, because she is worth that. She is worth that and then some. And you don't need to be with her for thirty years, you just have to meet her for a minute, and you'll know.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracy Jenkins. I've been fortunate enough to grow up with Ms. Hannan before ECAP. Her son Paul over there, and her other brother Joel, we all grew up together. We were Boy Scouts, all that other kind of stuff. She used to babysit me as a kid. And so to see how she's being recognized for what she's doing with ECAP, she's always been that person. Her and my mom were very close. I used to spend the night at her house. She has such an influence on me as far as what she's doing with the nonprofit, that I started my own nonprofit, because I was one of those tech people too that got burnt out. And so I came up with the name Create-A-Way, because I figured that's how she, she had to do it. She had to create a way. And so now I'm fifteen years in, I come down to ECAP as often as I can. I look at her as a role model. I'm looking forward to seeing that building with her name on there. I'm really looking forward to that. And I just want to thank you guys for recognizing her, and thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lea Boligotro. And about five years ago, my husband and I were actually in the line getting food from ECAP. Things were a little bit tight for us, and Bobby and Ms. Hannan organization and all the volunteers really helped us make it through. Luckily, we had the chance to get to volunteer with them, and now things are a little bit better, but we're just always so happy to come there. And if on a Saturday morning, we felt a little bit lazy, we look at each other as we feel, well, Ms. Hannan and Bobby are there seven days a week, so let's just stand up and, and go help them. So thank you so much for all your work. You're helping a lot of people, and I'm amazed to see you have a lot of volunteers that are really dedicated to helping you and your organization. They're a little bit humble. I don't know if they're gonna come and speak, but I know that Roger and Susan are there every Saturday and Sunday, and there's working during the day, so these are examples of people that are really making that organization work. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public? Now I'll ask, oh, chief. Welcome.
Hello, Council Chief Jennings. I don't normally come up here voluntarily, but Ms. Hannan has been one of the first persons I met when I came, became the chief during COVID. And again, like everyone else, thoroughly amazed by her energy, her humbleness, and her willingness to sacrifice her own energy and time to help others. Our PD is indelibly connected. Her, her son was one of our sergeants, and he, one of the people that helped me introduce her to her and his uncle Bobby, who was also a retired police officer. And they are connected to the police department in a way that every time we do any of our outreach, they're one of the first people we go to, and they're the first ones to reach back out to us, and it's very satisfying. So I really respect and love what she does, and obviously, all of us here do too. So I felt compelled, so, thank you.
Members, would any of you like to make remarks? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you so much for giving me the privilege of honoring Ms. Hannan today. It has been a huge privilege. I'm very grateful that you've shared it with me. I'm very touched by that gesture. Thank you so much. And I was hoping that we would use this platform and give Ms. Nellie Hannan this platform so that the computer network equipment and all of the needs are met efficiently, quickly, and very soon, and we can see this become bigger and better. And thank you for everything you do, Ms. Hannan, and the lady who you spoke that. We are actually the people who are blessed because of her presence. I truly agree with that. Thank you so much.
Member Welch?
When I think about Ms. Hannan, I can't think of any part of progress that has taken place in Emeryville that she wasn't a part of, whether it was getting more affordable housing, diversifying the, the police force, the work that she does in ECAP. Every part of Emeryville progress since she's been here, she's been a part of. And being the glass ceiling breaker, as far as the first black woman on the city council, it's always celebratory, right? But the thing about being the glass ceiling breaker is the glass falls on you, and you get all of the shards first. And so thank you for being bold and brave and breaking that glass ceiling. I don't, I think I can speak for my, my vice mayor in saying that we're a part of your legacy as women of color serving on this body, and that we wouldn't have been here without you, and that your legacy here on the city council, which includes many accolades, but also is continued through us as women of color, and even us having our first black woman city manager, you moving that needle here in Emeryville is, is long-lasting. And just thank you for being, again, being bold and being brave and pushing that needle. And yes, we're the ones that are blessed. You could do this work anywhere. There are all parts of the Bay Area, all parts of the nation that need people like you, and we are so blessed. And we are so blessed and lucky that you have dedicated the rest of your life to serving this community.
Member Pryforce?
As each one has received a gift, use it to serve one another as good stewards of God's varied grace. One Peter, four 10. I could be long-winded, but somebody has to be on your feet at 6:00 a.m. So we're crossing into your bedtime pretty soon. So I'll keep my comments short. Well, first, thank the state Senator's office for being here. I also want to acknowledge the protesters of People's Park. I didn't know if you all know, remember Heston, the young man who was here? One of my former students, my mentee. But Latoya is his mom. And so if you remember him hanging out with Drew in the back. And so I want to give a shout out to Latoya. I'm so glad that you've joined this family. Love, love is interesting, because I believe that the nation loved Dr. King. But Harry Belafonte helped pay for his funeral, because we couldn't love him in a way that he should have been loved while he was with us. And, you know, and I've shared it during Black History Month, that I would rather, when we look at our black leaders, that we do more than just words. And the impact that Nellie Hannan has had on Emeryville, I believe that Emeryville is a better place, a better city in terms of our morale as a city because of you, because of the work that you've done, because of what you've built. Now, the Brown Act says that we have to inform the public of things that come up on the agenda. And we didn't do a, we could have done a better job of informing the public. Because I believe that if the public knew that you were being recognized tonight, oh, this would be filled. This would be filled. There'll be press here. I mean, you couldn't keep Emeryville back. And so I caution to my colleagues that we do a bit better when it comes to how we inform the public when one of our heroes is being celebrated. Robert Savage, you're familiar with. His, his family, after he passed away, had to struggle with keeping his home. And I believe that for a champion of housing, of low-income housing, affordable housing, however you want to say it, you have made sure that people with shelter and without shelter are humanized. That love in the city of Emeryville should look like making sure that for the rest of your days, that you have a permanent home in Emeryville that is taken care of by our city. That is how we love our heroes while they are still with us, that you should never have to worry about paying rent and your bills and everything that you have to do. We're creative enough. You know, we're building this amazing building with your name on it. And I believe that we should do more and do better to make sure that your legacy is preserved. And so I want to thank you for just being this amazing, this spirit. I want to thank Brother Bobby for being my sister's keeper. You know, for being the brother who showed up and being a leader for ECAP. I want to thank Vicky and Latoya and for all of you who I volunteered with, that I've heard your stories, all of you who continue to support and celebrate her, that I, you know, that the city of Emeryville is better because of Nellie Hannan.
I would just like to briefly add a quick comment. I do want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. And it's very clear that Nellie Hannan, you've touched so many lives. And you've done tremendous good for this community. And we owe you a tremendous debt. So thank you on behalf of the city. Next on the agenda, we'll move to item 4.1. This is the Economic Development Advisory Committee's Annual Report on Committee Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments for the Calendar Year 2024 and Proposed Committee Priorities for the Calendar Year 2025. Director Smalley?
We'll be hearing from Chair Mary Lou Thierkoff to give this presentation.
Welcome, Mary Lou.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Moore, Vice Mayor Carr, city council members. I'm Mary Lou Thierkoff, and I'm the chair of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, aka the EDAC. I'm going to talk a little bit about our accomplishments for 2024 and our priorities for 2025. Next. First of all, our committee goals and principles. The role of the EDAC is to provide input and recommendations regarding city policies and procedures and priorities as they relate to the city's economic development priorities and strategies. Next. Our accomplishments in 2024. Our major priorities for 2024 were to develop a Black Indigenous People of Color, the BIPOC Small Business Support Program, and to begin implementation of our marketing program. In our effort to learn about successful BIPOC business support programs, we reviewed presentations from several organizations. Northwestern University came in to the EDAC and explained their approaches to small business needs assessment and how they would do their research and interviews. And BMO Bank had started a Zero Barriers to Inclusion Program, which focused on providing access to opportunities for groups who were facing systemic barriers to succeeding in their businesses. And then we heard from the Hope Foundation, which was founded to address the resource gaps in Black entrepreneurial and creative endeavors. And they've expanded their program now to include Hispanics. Then ESO Ventures talked with us. They support small businesses in various ways. Their goal is to address economic, racial, and gender gaps through the work and success of entrepreneurs. They establish incubators to help the businesses scale up and grow. And then we heard from Bridgegrid, which develops pathways for underrepresented young job seekers by delivering accessible technology and professional design opportunities and career resources. Lots of career resources for these people. And our first step, we proceeded to engage with Northwestern University to conduct our BIPOC Small Business Needs Assessment, which started in 2025, in January. Our second major priority for 2024 was the implementation of the Emeryville Marketing Program. Upon EDAC's recommendation, the city contracted with Five10 Media to implement our marketing program. They started with deep research to gather insights, a brand audit, and the website foundation. Five10 Media plans to launch the marketing program in 2025. Next. Our other 2024 accomplishments. We received updates on the formation of the new business organization, Emeryville Commerce Connection. And in March of 2024, the EDAC handed over the networking events to the ECC at Floris, Cuchina, and Bar. That was the day that Chad did not have to do events any longer. And we monitored the development of the Tobacco Retailer Ordinance in 2024. And by way of Chad, reached out to those businesses that we thought would be affected by this ordinance. We received updates from the RCCD, the Rotten City Cultural District. And we received updates on the Art Center. EDAC coordinated with the RCCD to keep each other updated on projects and promotions and art exhibits that were going on. And that EDAC would also be in touch with the ECC so that all three entities knew what was going on with all their projects. Then in 2024, we also had a brokers panel, which was called State of the Commercial Real Estate Market, where we learned really what was going on in Emeryville and where the vacancies were. This stressed the necessity of the solutions program that we're working on that reduces the barriers to reuse of existing buildings by new businesses coming to town. Next. Okay, so our top priorities for 2025. Our first priority is our BIPOC Small Business Support. We're going to complete the needs assessment. And we call it with robust engagement, because the research is really a lot one-on-one. And it's done through focus groups and interviews. And it's underway right now. Then we will evaluate best practices, as we are informed by Northwestern University. And then we'll identify the appropriate BIPOC program implementation partners who will best meet the needs of the businesses. And then we'll develop and launch our program. And that will be a big accomplishment. Our second priority is our marketing program. The contract was awarded. The brand audit happened in 2024. Insights were gathered. And so now, we'll launch the website that tells the story of Emeryville as a complete community and the center of art and innovation. And we'll launch the social media marketing campaign this year to drive traffic to the website. We look forward to, I look forward to tomorrow's EDAC meeting, where we will have an update on our brand concepts and website progress from Five10 Media. We expect more visibility for Emeryville this year. And messages will be out there that help the business community understand the benefits of locating in Emeryville. There's nowhere else to be except here. Okay, next. Our other 2025 priorities. We'll continue discussions of activities to reduce the commercial vacancies. We'll explore ways to help the businesses with security. And we'll also try to engage them on disaster preparedness. The EDAC will continue collaboration with the ECC and the RCCD. We're really into acronyms in this town. We will continue our support of the Art Center project. And next. So in conclusion, the EDAC has remained an engaged and productive advisory body in 2024 and going into 2025. We expect 2025 to be significant for economic development activities in Emeryville with the launch of EDAC's marketing program and the growth of the Emeryville Commerce Connection and the continued expansion of the Rotten City Cultural District programs. These three initiatives offer great opportunities for collaboration that will benefit Emeryville's economy. And the EDAC is excited to be a part of this. And I'd like to thank Chad Smalley for his fearless leadership of the EDAC and all the EDAC members. What I love is that they're loyal and they take their jobs seriously. And they are reflective in their assessments of our projects and thoughtful in their comments. I work with a wonderful group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Members, any questions? Member Carr, Vice Mayor Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Mary Lou, thank you. I love that you love what you do. It shows, and I really appreciate that. It's really not a question but a comment. The question is, so I very, it's great that you're working with Public Arts and the Rotten City Cultural District. You just heard Nellie Hannan being honored. And so I was wondering, is there anything in, any scope in the business community through EDAC to help get the launching or the successful opening of the Nellie Hannan Gateway?
Of course.
Fantastic.
ECAP is a member of the ECC. Oh, there's another acronym. Okay, so of course, yes. And we'll write about it in our newsletter. And we'll help out any way we can.
Good to know. Appreciate hearing that.
Any other questions? Do we have any public comment on this item? Members, any comments before we officially receive the report? Thank you, Mary Lou.
Thank you.
Next, we have item 4.2, the Public Art Committee Annual Report on Committee Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments for the Calendar Year 2024. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Taryn Walker, and I'm the chair of the Public Art Committee. We have a lot of exciting art to show you this evening. And we're going to be touching on our accomplishments for 2024 and also share the goals that we have for 2025. Before we get started, I do want to send a shout out to my committee members, starting with the vice chair, Ron Davis. We have Salma Arastu, Mike Hagerty, David Riedel Huber, Dr. Laura Giffkin, Vicky Jo Sewell, who's behind me, Rick Tahada Flores, and Judy Wetterer. We also want to acknowledge our past members of our PAC since we've gotten to this point, thankfully with their help. And that's Edith Breznerhan and Harley Jensen. In addition, I would also like to send a shout out to Amber Evans. She is the wind beneath the PAC's wings. So we're very excited to have her. You'll see, starting off, we have our Bus Shelter Art Installation. This was from fall 2024, the fourth phase. And the fourth phase of Phase Seven. Just confusing you a bit with some numbers. But this is Jess Cook's beautiful artwork there of the shell. So moving on to our 2024 accomplishment, this is our 40th Streetscape Public Art RFQ/RFP Artist Selection. This was quite a bit of work for our subcommittee and our PAC to find our artists and also decide on who would be contributing to our city and designing our iconography for wayfinding, creating a very consistent installation all along 40th Street. And also producing very unique art installations in all the new plazas that we're going to have. So we've selected Sijia Chen for this project. And if you'd like to participate and help out, April 10th, Thursday, right, at ECCL, you can come in and participate and contribute to what we'll be seeing on our Streetscape Public Art Project. So moving on to our second priority in 2024, this is our Neighborhood Convergence Restoration. And you'll see these sculptures underneath the freeway. And basically, this work needs to be restored. And And basically, this work needs to be restored and we're relocating 11 of the painted sculptures on Powell Street under I-80. And this has been delayed due to some additional transportation project work. But this is the work of Louise Stanley and also Vicky Jo Sewell. So we'll be working on that. In 2024, we also had a lot of turnover with our committee. We had new folks joining and we really wanted to come together for a PAC retreat and discuss the future of what we wanted to see from our PAC and what is art to us, how do we engage the community? And we did this very successfully with the retreat and we have our painted roosters to prove that we were there and we did it. Moving on to more accomplishments for 2024, this is our Visual Arts Grant and we have six that have been implemented in 2024. Salma Arastu's work, Juan Lopez, Rachel Wolf Goldsmith, John Patrick Thomas, Sean Griffin, Joey Rose, and more to be completed in 2025 by Chris Cudneo and also by Packard Jennings. These are really lovely displays and I highly encourage you to go out and look at them. They're very vibrant and participating in this Visual Arts Grant, I can say that we had a tremendous number of amazing applicants and it was very difficult to choose and we're so fortunate to have landed on these. So more accomplishments for 2024, that includes our Purchase Award. This is a beautiful totem carving that was done by Roberto Gastalumendi. And this is mixed hardwoods. It's a very towering totem. He created this in 2019 and we, yeah, we're planning our celebration. I heard Taco Bar, right? Taco Bar, on March 27th and this will be displayed in our City Hall. So please make sure you stop by and look. It's really a beautiful piece of art. Moving on to our Purchase Awards, so these were works that were purchased in 2023, but we're counting this as our 2024 accomplishment. And this is our work from Erin Fong, displayed in the Senior Center. This is in the stairwell of the Senior Center and Erin just has a wonderful command of color and how she interprets all of the colors, so highly recommend you view it. Moving on to Phase Seven of our Bus Shelter Art. This is our Sharon Wilshar Bus Shelter Art Program. And we had our 2023 Call and our local artists in 2024 that we installed include Lisa Rock, Rego Arvion, and also Jess Cook, whose work we saw in the beginning of our presentation. Moving on, in 2024, we also installed a commission by Ned Khan. This is the Edge of the Veil. And this is in our fire station, so really unique work here. And looking into our 2024 accomplishments, again with our initiated Phase Eight Bus Shelter Art, we have requested for proposals and basically we are preparing for our 2025 Call for Artists for the Phase Eight. And so we'll see these in our selected bus shelters in Emeryville. The next item includes a refresh of our public art map. As we all know, we have a fantastic public art program. We have a lot of art to show and we want everyone to get out walking around and seeing these beautiful artworks. And the PAC this year, or last year, worked on a refresh and so we selected artwork to be displayed. This isn't comprehensive because we have so much, the map would be massive if we did include everything. We have some new photography. It's a new look and feel in terms of, you know, colors and some of the map iconography. And we've also integrated in with our Rotten City Cultural District. So if you need some, I know Amber has many. Now touching on to our full collection of public art, we accomplished a GIS mapping of the entire collection and just to keep track of everything, but it's very vast. So that was a lot of work and we really appreciate the efforts to make sure that we have it all documented, listed in this format. So staying connected, we launched our social media campaign. You can follow us on Instagram, on Facebook. Give us a like anytime you want, we'll take it. But this is a great way for us to communicate what kind of new artwork and what kind of new opportunities exist for artists. And moving on to our private development, this is Art in Public Places. We have a selection of really lovely artwork here, sculptures, murals, and this is all in the city of Emeryville, so definitely want to go out and check this out. Moving on to 2025, we have two top goals here and that pertains to our 40th Streetscape Icon Development and our Approval and also the Neighborhood Convergence Restoration Project. We're also looking into other maintenance priorities, given we do have a lot of art and it does require some maintenance over time. Going into more detail on the next slide, we have our 40th Street Iconography. This is our project here where our artist CJ Chen will lead our paper cutting workshop. This is where you can join in on the action and shape this art that will be in our community. And this will be on April 10th. So we're going to see some iconic flora fauna, lots of images, and we are interested in surveying the public and understanding what they want in this Streetscape project. Doing a deeper dive into our other goal for Neighborhood Convergence, the relocation and restoration of our 11 painted sculptures on Powell Street, we'll be continuing to integrate that into the Streetscape Project and consulting with the artists as well. Other goals in 2025, this includes the Sharon Wilshar Bus Shelter Program. This is Phase Eight. Budgeting for and program developments for our Visual Art Grants for 2026 and also complete our 2024 Grants. We also have our 2025 Purchase Award Selection and 2024 Purchase Award Installation. We are considering creating a lending program for Purchase Award Collection. As you can imagine, we do have a lot of art, so maybe we can all have a piece of it in our homes one day. We'll see. Updates to the new GIS map and expansion of the social media presence is also on the docket. And going on to our last slide, we wanted to thank everyone for their contributions with some vibrant art, but also highlight this beautiful building with the Sunset Neural. This is art by Joaquin Newman. And this artwork was commissioned by the Resources for Community Design, the developers of the new Housing and ECAP building, which is also named for Nellie Hannan. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Taryn. Members, any questions? Yes, Member Pryforce.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your presentation and the, I do have favorites and the PAC is one of my favorites. The Housing Committee is actually, you know, they're stepping up though. So shout out to the Housing Committee and the Valerie, but Amber and what you've all have done. Usually when I start off with compliments is because I'm making an ask, right, in the form of a question. But all you have done in terms of not just the diversity of the committee, making sure that there's a range of opinions, your background, I remember when we selected you to join the committee, we just knew that your background was just going to just bring new energy and amazing ideas and leadership. And it looks like that's exactly what's happened. We're seeing you all everywhere and you're just so engaged. And so thank you for your leadership. The, I saw a picture of an event that you all did at, with our schools. And I was wondering, because I got into a very interesting conversation with someone about a member of the Artist Co-op community who passed away recently. And the conversation was about like the next generation of artists and that Emeryville, in terms of our school system, has always tried to find a way of, you know, what is our school system known for? You know, are we a sort of biosciences school? Are we, you know, STEM? Are we that sort of thing? And when we think about art schools and art colleges and preparing our young people, I'd like to know, has there been any engagement with, with the principals of our schools or with the school board in terms of perhaps finding a way to onboard? And you all are already doing great, right? Like I'm just adding this question, student artists and finding ways to that perhaps create some sort of pipeline for student artists who can create maybe perhaps a portfolio and can be considered for, you know, our greatest art colleges in our country. And knowing that that happened because of this partnership between PAC, you know, our school system, maybe ECCL. And so, yeah, so that's what I'm thinking about, like the next generation. Has there been any conversation around perhaps an award or some sort of activities, programming when it comes to students?
I know with minors, we are limited with how we can award grants and provide funding. However, in our last PAC meeting, we were discussing how we can engage with that younger group of the community. And I think this is a really great point to bring up, that we would be in a good position to also partner with Rotten City Cultural District and who maintains that big list of artists and even be able to match up our up and coming young artists with established and even give them some help on the, with their portfolio and making connections when they need it. So I think that's a great call out and we can bring that back to the PAC.
Members, any other questions? Maybe I can ask, what was the significance of the roosters?
It was team building, yeah. It was a little bit unexpected too, but we were told, you know, that we would be making a mess and so that was appreciated. But it was really just to, you know, get to know each other. We had a lot of new folks joining the PAC and, you know, there's no better connecting device than through art. So, yeah, and comparing each other's, I think it was a surprised rooster, so capturing that element.
Thank you. Yes, it was a lovely tour of art in the city. I'd like to ask if there's any members of the public who would like to make comment? Seeing none, members, any other comments before we receive the report? Thank you, Taryn. Next is Item Five, Announcement of Commission Committee Vacancies. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any report this evening.
Councilmember Special Announcements or Reports on Meeting Attendance? Seeing none, City Managers Report?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to report for members of the public that the City Council will be hosting a strategic planning session this Friday, March 21st, at the ECCL, which is located at 4727 San Pablo Ave and Building A, the Community Room. And that will take place from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Expartee Communications. Members, looking over the rest of the agenda, do you have any expartee communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, now is the time for public comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to make comment? Please come to the podium.
So the folks at ECAP think that Ms. Nellie should have an apartment in the Ms. Nellie affordable housing building. And they thought they were promised it by the developer, RCD. And I told them developers can't really do that, but, and how it works, I was on the Housing Committee, so I know how it works. To get an apartment, you have to go on a list and then there's a raffle. So the city can't really give you an apartment either. So we need, if we want to give Ms. Nellie an apartment, we sort of have to figure out how to look out of the box. So Scott had a good idea, so I'm going to let Scott come up. He has an idea of how to think out of the box. So anyway.
Normally, the city has a management apartment for much of our affordable housing. Maybe we could have two management apartments. That one for the actual manager and maybe one for Nellie who would be managing downstairs on the first floor. So that's my idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any other members of the public? I'll bring it back to council. So for the consent items, are there any items that we would like to pull or is there a motion on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no public hearings, no action items. Are there any department head reports?
No report this evening. Thanks.
Next is Future Agenda Item Requests. Members, do you have any future agenda items?
Sure. I like Scott's idea. I, does, can the staff inform me if it is something that we can consider on a future agenda item or is this a Housing Committee issue or where does it go, to budget and governance?
Is there a recommendation from staff on the best committee to discuss the proposal that was mentioned during public comment? Sounds like budget and governance.
Whatever your preference, I just soon just address it directly with any interested parties with an off-agenda memo or similar communication.
Number Welch?
I was going to say, I believe there, because of the situation, this would have to be something that's discussed with RCD. It wouldn't be something that could actually be authorized by the council. I don't even think Mr. Kennedy, that would have to be a complete different conversation with RCD, correct? to be a complete different conversation with RCD. Correct? Is that correct, Valerie? Sorry. Right? Okay.
That's completely fine.
Right.
All right. In that case, it's not a future agenda item.
Member Pryforce?
So I think that, so Scott had an idea, I think, perhaps with that agenda is a way for us to figure out a way, right? Like, figure out, you know, do some brainstorming, some creative solutions. There is a way. The opportunity for the staff to do some sort of study to see if this has ever been done, how can it get done? I think that that is, I'd like to see that put forward, other than us just saying that we're just not going to address it at all, and then may practice staff can come back to us and say, no, can't get it done. And so I think at least being able to explore if it's possible, because, you know, I've got already like 10 different ideas as to how to make something like that work, but I'd like to see if other cities have done something similar.
So I think if I understood correctly, Chad, was this something that you were suggesting that you could explore offline? Okay, and you don't need instruction from council to do that, or would you prefer to have a formal instruction from council?
I think, you know, I heard the request is fairly straightforward. You know, folks want to find a way to, you know, to accommodate this request for a unit in this project. I think there's a lot of barriers to doing that. We will explore it creatively and communicate out.
Thank you. All right. Any other future agenda items? Member Pryforce?
Yeah, so I would like to re-invite to this council chamber the Pledge of Allegiance to return. I believe actually one of our former council members was a part of that discussion as to changing, I believe, the Pledge of Allegiance to, was it, this land is your land, my land? Yeah, that, yeah, exactly, which is, you know, no offense, colonial as fuck. Yeah, so, you know, I'd like, but if that discussion can actually happen, then I believe that a discussion can also happen around a modern take as to how we pursue a Pledge of Allegiance, which I will demonstrate.
Members, with a show of hands, is there support for adding a discussion on the Pledge of Allegiance to future agenda items supported?
Just for public clarification purposes, I want to ask, confirm this item has already been previously addressed?
Member Pryforce raised it as a future agenda item.
So, okay. So the point of addressing it is that we can discuss it. If we don't, if you don't agree, we don't agree. It is what it is, but for there to be a modern discussion, the diversity of our council looks a lot different than when it was Scott's time with the council. And so when our officers, fire, and police stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, when our border supervisors stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, when Oakland stands for a Pledge of Allegiance, and other cities surrounding us do it, and then we don't, I don't believe that there is, has been a healthy discussion around that that is modern, just as we have brought back other things in the past that we're not, that could take a modern look. And even if this was passed to budget and governance, because this probably goes into governance, still, it would be something that at least is addressed. And I bring this because people have brought this to me, that they are upset that this decision was made, and the public didn't really have much input in this, and that's something that's really important to me. Whether we agree or not, whether we decide to do it, it is what it is, but that's it, and I will.
So without having detailed conversation, I understand that you wish to have the discussion as a future agenda item. So members, by a show of hands, is there support for discussing the Pledge of Allegiance as a future agenda? Seeing none, the motion fails. Do you have another item? Thank you. Members, any other items? No future agenda items. Time is 8:36. This meeting is adjourned.